The May Planning Board meeting, the town of West Bass. I don't think we need to reintroduce ourselves. She didn't turn it off from the turnoff knob, did you, Carly?
I did, yeah. Just to keep them separate.
So you're posting them separate?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, I, my name is Darlene Nesterbrook. I am the Chair of the Planning Board. If the gentleman or all the other members would introduce themselves, please.
Jim Williams.
Gabe Whitney.
Jerry Mitchell.
Jamie Wallace.
All right. We call it the order. We have a quorum because we require only three members to have a quorum, and tonight we have five. Third item is amendments to the agenda. Does anyone have any amendments to make to the agenda? Seeing none, there are no amendments to the agenda. We will jump right into the applicants. Uh, we have Burgess Brothers, non-performing expansion. If you come forward, please. What are these? These are your applications. I'm not sure that they're in the papers.
They somehow lost mine.
My very work is in there.
Okay.
You want? Have you got yours? You're all set?
Hi.
Okay, great. Hi.
Hi, I'm Chris.
Hi, Chris. Your last name, sir, for the record? Oh, okay. You're a Burgess Brother.
Yeah.
Got it.
I live with my sons. We're just trying to get them to, um, what do you, real estate, you know, kind of.
Absolutely.
See how it goes.
Yep. All right. Do you want to just explain to us, sir, what you're doing?
So, um, we bought this little cottage and we want to raise the roof, um, and just so there's more headroom upstairs. And, um, so we, it's, um, it's, it's in pretty good shape, but there's a lot of rock that we're replacing. And, um, we're like in the process of leveling it up and shoring it up underneath and, um, and then, you know, sistering up the framing, uh, where necessary and, um, and then the roof up on the second floor where there's a bedroom, you have to duck. And so we just want to, um, go up with the roof, um, so the walls will get higher hot plates. And studs sistered on and, um, and the roof will be higher by a little over 10%. And, um.
So are you putting a foundation underneath of it? It looks like it's on like posts.
Yeah, the posts that were there were kind of rotten, so we put in six by six posts on, um, paths that are on crust stone. And, um, and it was like, it had a big sag in the middle. It was like 22 inches at this end and 10 inches at this end. Um, now it's, I, I didn't think we were going to get it that level, but we actually, it's within like 3 8/2 inch. Like right, right now, but.
So you're, so you're keeping it on the post and just going to spur around it?
Yeah, yeah. We're trying to keep everything kind of the same. Um, the side will be different because I'm gonna like insulate it from the outside. It, it's gonna be seasonal, but, you know, um, or at least that's the plan, but, um, um, yeah. It's kind of a fun project. It's gonna take longer than I thought, but I think it's, we're doing right by the structure. It's really, um, yeah.
So you're not expanding outside of the original?
No, just.
Yeah. You're just going up on that, that center path there?
That's right.
And you're not putting in new foundation and you're just using posts like it was there before?
Yeah, yeah.
Carly, is there an application that's like an original? Was the fee on it somewhere? What was the fee?
Uh, the 30% of the expansion fee.
I was gonna fill one out.
Is $250.
All right, perfect, thank you. Okay, so, sir, you are the owner. High-density shoreline. How can you do it? I'm just checking through the application here. It's a subject to a previous shoreline expansion application. John, you checked it, right? And it's not? Okay, perfect.
It's original.
It's original?
Yeah.
Great, thank you very much. And did you go down and take a look?
Yes, I've done that once, yeah.
And how close is it to the water? We've got a little sketch here.
It's huge. It's right there.
It's right there, yeah.
It's scary close.
Yeah.
Scary close. My in-laws actually had a place that was 10 feet off of the water. It's very, very close. Okay. All right, so, let's see. We've got some cottage.
So are you gonna do a new septic system?
Uh, yeah. Um, there's, I had, um, Jeremy Work have his guy do, uh, HHE, the septic design.
And we have that in here, right?
Yeah.
All right. Yep, so we have one. Did you take a look at it?
Yeah, looks good.
Good. All right. So do we want to just start going through this checklist, um, there? So we've got a site plot plan, which is this one here, 24 by 36. Title block with owner name, Burgess Brothers, north arrow map, scale north. Current owner of source deeds, those were in the packet I saw, those are your quick claim deeds. Boundaries and designations of zone, districts, and overlay. I don't think the zone overlay even shows up on your plan, but you've got it listed as high-density. Lot dimensions, property lines, and area. We have lot dimensions. Do we have area? On here somewhere, yes. 800, uh, sorry, 8,075 square feet. Name of body, property owners.
Yes.
Yes? You've got that?
Gift free.
Oh, I see, it's a list, okay. Um, let's see. Right-of-ways, public and private. Do you have the right-of-ways down there? The size of the road, I guess you put it here. So you own both sides of the road?
Yeah, that's where the septic is gonna go.
Oh, okay. All right. So, location of high tide mark, river streams, and crooks. You've got the water. On here somewhere.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's over there. Let's see. All existing buildings within the property, so there are no buildings across the way. Just the existing septic. Areas to be cleared, tree growth. Are you clearing trees to do your septic?
Um, as minimally as possible, um, yeah. Um, Jeremy came by and put some flags on some trees like that was gonna come out of them. But, um, and I think I have a tree guy that's pretty good. I think he's really conservative, so. And he's actually really good friends with Jeremy, and like Jeremy was like, kind of saying he was gonna take a lot more. I think if I was, this guy would take less, you know, and so I, and anyway, so probably, yeah, this'd be minimal tree removal, like enough to do the septic.
Yeah, so you've got on here NA for tree removals, so I'm gonna cross this off. And, um, you are required to see the coenforcement officer.
Okay.
To cut any trees.
Okay.
Within that area, I believe.
Yeah.
How far back are we, 52?
That septic will be outside of 75, but.
You think it would? You think it is?
It will be, yeah.
Okay. All right, so anything within the 75, if you're looking to trim anything over here.
Oh, right.
You always have to go and see.
Yeah.
John Bean, the coenforcement.
Yeah.
Because there's special rules on the shoreline.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, so you're 52 feet back, then you can move it through the roads, you probably are 75.
Yeah, don't you have to use like a point system or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a point system, um, so yes, you're clearing trees, but the plan is not, not required. Okay? Because you're far enough back. Um, areas of cut, filigrating, or other earth moving. There really isn't anything on here for that. You're not digging into the ground to do anything for the.
Just when the septic goes right now.
And the septic goes outside of the 75. Let's see. Wetland areas and their classification, you don't have that. Flood hazard areas is depicted on the flood insurance rate map. Is that on there?
That, that question, I mean, actually, I wasn't quite sure. I mean, I looked at it, I looked at it on the, on the flood map. It's elevation nine, zone eighty, it's in no danger.
Right.
So I just had Chris check that because there wasn't really any other information to provide.
Okay, so I mean, if, um.
There's quite a cliff on the water side, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it drops down, so if he's more than nine feet higher than the, than the water, you're probably all set.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I didn't, I looked, I looked into it, I didn't see any issues, but I just really know exactly what to provide except to speak at a meeting, so.
Yeah, I mean, and usually just on here, you can write not within the flood lane. And then it's covered, so I'm just gonna write on here on NA, on the application, on the checklist, or whatever.
Yeah.
But yeah, usually that's enough. And even, sometimes you can do like an A and a half by 11 of the, just the area, just to show it's not. And you can tell from the pictures.
Right.
That he's applied, so, um, let's see. Location, size of existing sewer systems, water supply, culvers, and drains. You've got your existing septic over here, right? Soil erosion and sediment, sedimentation control measures if soil is going to be disturbed by construction activities. So that's not an NA because you're digging for your septic.
Oh, uh-huh.
So you're gonna have to make sure that you're following the state best management practices for erosion control. And if you've got Jeremy doing it, I know he does that.
Okay, cool.
So. Campbell Pond, when against Palm Water Sher, you're nowhere near that, so 18 and 19 do not apply. Supporting data, you have an application. Verification of right talent interest, yes, you have deed. Letter of agent not applicable because you have a deed. Location description, our map, we have that. Where is the building? Do we have photos, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, photos from all over sides, thank you. Makes it easier to, to tell what's going on.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, where was I? Complete site plot plan, we have that. Erosion sedimentation control plan if needed. Um, again, you're gonna need river control around the digging just for that septic field. Really important if it was gonna be done around your house.
Yeah.
Because of the water.
Right.
But you're not doing anything around your house digging. So how do you guys feel about just waving that for the septic?
Yeah, so you get put in there, right, without?
It's the septic, yeah. It's the septic, it's beyond the 75 feet, it's across the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the water.
Okay.
All right, so we're gonna wave that. Uh, building plans of existing structures include the building outline. I think that's up here. You guys take a look at that. See, we have furniture on there.
I know, my friend, my friend of mine is an architect and he's like, I can do it for you. It's way better than I could do, but, um, yeah, you put stuff in there.
He spent a hour, didn't he?
Did he?
To put the furniture in.
He didn't really, I don't know yet.
Just kidding. Let's see, so we've got existing structure, we've got proposed structure. The plans don't really highlight the expansion because you're not going out, you're just going up. So that's, yes, this was the one with the elevations.
Yeah, she'll have that.
Yeah, she's been, she's been checking it. Awesome, thank you. All right, so for number nine, yes, we're all set. So copy of deed and covenants on the law. Um, this copy of the deed, you never have the covenants down there, do you?
Um, yeah, not to this one.
Yep. So expansion sketches to support the presented worksheet calculations. Was that in the?
Some of the second sheet, but. So that in addition.
Okay, perfect. You guys check.
I was 10%.
It's good?
Yeah.
Okay. Type an advocacy of service disposal for expansion, so you've got your septic design. And Jeremy looked at that, said it was good.
Yeah.
So I think we're good for that. It's gonna say type. Driveway access or entrance permit, you already have a driveway, so that is not applicable. Um, affidavit for recording a Sagal Hawt registry of deeds, so.
I have that here.
So if we don't take that, we just make sure that people are aware that they need to fill that out.
Yeah.
When they go to get their building permit.
Yeah, John said after this, do it or something.
Yep, perfect. Perfect. All right. So we're in here, so it's 10.26% volume and zero in floor area. So we've got all the numbers. Signed. You're not changing the bedrooms. Okay, do you guys have any questions? For Mr. Brooks?
No, I'm good. Also good?
I'm good.
Okay, Chris?
When did you want to start?
Um, uh, this is possible. I mean, I'm kind of doing what I can now, but, but this, um, yeah, this is, you know. Um, I'd like to get, I mean, completely, like, before we can like put people in there, um, it's kind of probably not gonna be the next, you know, season. But, um, but yeah, I'd like to get it, you know, under roof and windows and kind of, you know, height before winter and then start, you know. Kind of through the winter, just keep going on the other system.
You're doing all this?
Uh, yeah, I have a friend who's a builder, he's a posted beam guy, but, um, you know, he's, you know, without him, I wouldn't have gotten it this hard, I'm not so far, it's kind of great, you know. But yeah, I, you know, it's kind of odd. Yeah.
It's quite funny.
Yeah, yeah, and I really think it's cool about it is just that we're doing right by the thing, you know?
So John, John, you're all set with this, it's always fine.
Kind of this whole rock place, like, you know, you could just knock it down or like.
Yeah.
Or whatever, but I think it's gonna be nice.
Yeah, it was, it's cool.
Would you like your motion?
Whenever you guys.
Motion approval is presented.
Second.
Any further discussion from the audience or anyone? Having none, let's have a vote, all of you, favor.
You got it.
All right. I have to fill this out.
Okay.
And then, um, John will give us a copy and you will be all set, sir.
Oh, yeah.
Today is Wednesday.
Go back.
I'm ready for that, bro. And.
Have you done these kind of parties before?
Um, yeah, I mean, I've always done like buildings and stuff. My, um, I'm mostly a furniture maker, used to teach furniture making, you know. So, um, you know, when it comes to like bench studs and stuff like that, I'm probably a little too precise and stuff, you know. But, um, but yeah, I, I, when I was in my twenties, I would work for builders and stuff like that. So yeah, I, I know just something in trouble.
Yeah, how was the, the water?
The right there?
The last, well, I mean, like the last week or so when it just dumped.
Oh, so I, yeah, I, um, I went by after, I didn't, I, not this event, but like, you know, rewind a month or two, there was one that like, I went there, it's kind of coursing, it definitely just goes right under there.
Right.
And, um, and now that we have the, the posts, um, on these concrete discs with this, you know, the crushed stone, or maybe the water can go and it's not really gonna move, you know? Um, so yeah, it's, it's mostly light in there, you know, so it's kind of like, it's pretty solid. It, it might heat and stuff like that a little bit here and there, but.
Thank you.
I think so, yeah, that's good, yeah.
All right, Mr. Burgess, he's gonna go in to a copy.
Okay.
And then you can have that, um.
Now I can start building?
You have to go to John and get your building permit and pay for your building permit.
All right.
And do your affidavit first, because then you can start building, yes.
Yeah, all right, handshake for all you messengers.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Good luck. Okay. So, next up on the list, we have Sagal Hawt County coming forth for site development, pre-application meeting for the tower, correct?
Yes.
Perfect. And your name, sir?
Uh, my name's Chad Agen, would like to have a conference here for Sagal Hawt. And I'll give you a quick overview of what they're thinking. Uh, they are proposing a 180-foot self-support power on, uh, what do we got here? Lot, uh, Mount Form Lot 9, that is off of Route 1. Uh, we're proposing to go off of the rest area, turn off, and build the road off of that. And we're working with you to configure that process.
To try to get access on the non-access road.
Yeah, it's a state highway or it's a highway road, so.
Right.
They have, there's an additional application, they have a, uh, meeting, they have a commissioners' meeting, I believe. So we're gonna be in on that one to see if they can allow us to do that, but to be determined, uh.
And so if we're going the other way?
Yeah, just because the road distance is so much longer, it costs the county. A lot of money to go in the other way, but, uh, with the traffic volume, it's typically one vehicle every month just for maintenance type of stuff, so it's not a huge traffic count. So hopefully, hopefully they buy up on it.
So it says you're using only 10,000 square feet?
Yeah, it's a 50 by 50 compound. So that's 2,500 and then move the road and parking lot, and then there'll be 10,000, 26, no, right? When she's adding pictures and that stuff.
Right. And just, um, so that you guys are aware of the communications towers, well, you know this, the, the, um. The ordinance was revised, not voted on yet, but there's been a revision to the ordinance making the height restriction that we have now, 150 feet, to be unlimited for any government agency, including county or town, rules happening. So the height in this one, after it passes, at the meeting in two weeks, if it passes, after it passes in two weeks. A week from today, the, the 180 feet, even though it's over the 150 right now, will be okay if that passes, so.
And we do have a waiver in there, just in, just in case, but.
So this is a pre-application meeting, so we don't really give you any approval.
Okay, no, that's fine, just go through it and see if you guys want more information on anything, or?
That's exactly what it is.
Uh, the application is in here.
So the, in the, in the ordinance, the app, communication towers are.
I'm gonna go through your packet, as our response is to all the, uh, documentation ordinances. We can go through those and see if you guys concur to them, or if you want more information.
Thanks, maybe. Do you have the full size one?
I do, my dog's sad on those.
Oh, you guys have a full size one, too.
I mean, we do have extra sets of.
So what's the total area that you are using?
So the road will be 12 feet wide, uh, compound 50 by 50, I think.
Right.
With a.
So that's 10,000.
That is 125 by 50, no, and then, uh, it has a parking lot area of, oh, I think it's 20 by 30.
So your 10,000 including the road?
Yes.
Okay.
Where will people turn in the parking area?
So it's, it's just, uh, I mean, there's gonna be one pickup truck in there.
How, how will they turn around, though? Maybe they're gonna back up way out the.
No, 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 this is 20 by 30, this turnaround area right here, so there's plenty of room to move a truck in and around.
And then you're just gonna go back behind with the, the concrete structure up there?
Yeah, so this is, uh, this is the rest stop and then this, this, some access already here, but it's more of a walking thing and then there's a gate back here, so we would just extend it. And obviously put a vehicle gate there so nobody can drive in there or, there's a gate here right now that surrounds this area, so. If the DOT or Sagal Hawt wants a full, full gate there, then we give you that too, but typically the vehicle gate.
Say 10,000.
Where was the vehicle gate, you said? Sorry?
Uh, so typically we'll put a vehicle gate, so this is the rest stop.
Yeah.
And there's a, there's a path or semi road, I'll call it, but we'll put, we'll put some type of barrier at this, so nobody can drive down here.
Gotcha. Right where the yellow begins on your plan?
Yes, yeah, pretty much, right there.
So the tower hits 180, will there be antennas above that?
There will be.
How high above that?
Uh, I think the red center is 178 and the antennas are 20 feet, so we have to stay under 200 feet, so it's not that.
Okay.
So.
So you're about 0.22 acres.
Yeah, it's not much.
Okay. So, let's see, communication towers, tower height, if that passes, it does not matter, but you said you're going for 180, oh.
No, we're going for 180 and the antennas will stick up to about 198.
And then how wide is the area up top?
Uh, 3 feet.
The square, oh, sorry, the, the square that you're putting the tower to?
Oh, the foundation, oh.
The width, the overall width. So 50.
The compound? Yeah.
Inside the fence?
Yeah.
And the base of the tower is 50 by 50?
No, the base of the tower will be designed by, uh, the tower manufacturer. Uh, they're typically 22 by 22, 4 feet deep, which is a big slab of concrete, pretty much, it's coming out of it.
So, finding it.
So we know if you'll have ledge up there?
Uh, we won't normally, so we do the geofact and we don't usually do that and go to the permit, so we, but we could provide all that stuff. I don't.
No, no, that's fine.
No, I don't believe we'll have ledge up there, but if there is, then we blast or, or.
So I see some written stuff about the fall zone, but I haven't seen that on the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't have a big enough fall zone if you're 50 by 50.
Oh, so I thought it was fall zone to the property line. So, so.
Your fence, so, so someone can wander around up there if they hipper a tower, right?
So your fall zone is saying it has to surround you on a fence?
Are, are you buying the property?
No, this is your, this is your town.
I understand, I understand that it is, so.
Well, I was just asking about, that he would show the, that they would show the fall zone.
Yeah, we could do that.
On the plan.
We could do that.
Because that's, that's one of our requirements, and we asked them to do that.
Correct.
And I don't think they need the fence in that whole fall zone.
Yeah, I thought.
Because that would be a large, large.
The existing tower on the, on the tower, the tower we have up at Trinket does not have. Yeah, I thought the ordinance said fall zone to property lines, but if you are considering.
Where's your lease line? Where's your lease line?
The fall zone, then that's different.
So, and that's maybe a thing that the town needs to acknowledge, is that I think your property line is 50 by 50.
Correct.
Which is not 125% of the height of that tower.
I do not disagree with that.
So my thought is, and just mine, you guys chime in, is that your lease zone should be 125% of the height of the tower.
So that's not how it is for the tower?
And how substantially more is that than what's? The tower behind Trinket.
So now you're talking at least area of 500, by 500 or?
So 10 times.
Well, the idea is, is that when there's, if the tower was to fall down. It wouldn't fall on another building or something like that. So that means that that area of the fall zone needs to be restricted, so there won't be any buildings in it.
Correct.
And so forth, that you have the right to fall into that area.
Yeah.
And how you do that legally with a lease, an easement, fee simple, I mean, that's all. Now, how you do that legally with a lease, an easement, fee simple, I mean, that's all. But you, you do need to have that fall zone and control of that fall zone.
Yeah, and, uh, we do have documentation that towers don't fall like trees, so...
I didn't have a lesson.
Towers don't fall like trees. So they're, they're designed to, if something happens, to fall inside the compound. So they've...
Well, our job is to kind of protect the public and so forth. And the ordinance does call for that in the fall zone, so... And I'm not sure that fall zone would include the antenna on top or if it'd be a hundred and eighty times a hundred and twenty-five percent or if it'd be a hundred and ninety, what did you say, a hundred and ninety? Yeah, two hundred feet.
Can I ask for a waiver on this?
Sure, but there's nothing in here that says you can have one.
So, all right, no, that's fine.
But, but it's a different situation. Usually we're dealing with people who want something in their yard or...
Right, yeah, yeah.
And you wanna make sure that it's not gonna fall from my yard into his.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So it's a different situation, but I think that legally, if you looked at it and you could ask counsel that the lease line should be, because if you're leasing on a fifty by fifty and then all of a sudden someone wants to do something next to it and no one knows...
We can't go into that space.
No one knows about this. Nothing can go into that zone. According to this, no building...
So I, so I just calculated it. If they're at a hundred ninety-eight, a hundred twenty-five percent is a two hundred and seventy-five feet, not five hundred.
Each way.
Each. Got it, okay.
It's a, it's a circular, it's the radius. It's not the width, it's the radius.
And, and what are the boundaries? I haven't been up to the site. What are the boundaries?
Uh, I think it's a fifty-five acre site.
No, no, but what, what's on the boundary? What is in, I know that...
Oh, uh, there's nothing there. Just Route, Route One is on one side and then...
We're not worried about that one.
Dimension from here to there, I don't care.
So, but, so in that, but to be, you're near the solar array. How far are you from falling into the soil? Or a shadow, are you near the solar array?
I have not seen a sign on that, so I'm not sure.
Like the second one?
But you are working in communication with them?
Uh, to some degree, to forty-one. So...
To some degree. Because we have a, we have a paid lease, Leslie?
Oh, okay.
And a free lease. And the free lease is not gonna stop this lease immediately.
Okay, understandable.
It needs more than two forty-one.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm, I'm not part of the lease process or anything. We're just doing the permit.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on. So you're talking to the public back there, by the way.
I'm sorry.
Um, so we're trying to figure out, what was it, one eighty-five, you said, was the height?
One eighty-five.
One eighty, one eighty. So two twenty-five and it's two...
And you have two forty-one.
So two forty-one. So what I was looking for is exactly how far that was.
Yeah.
It's two forty-one, so it could happen.
That's to the property line?
To the property line.
Yeah.
This is dimensioned at two forty-one and need two twenty-five with it right in that spot.
Where are they, are they budding? How close are they to the solar array or the budding? Do you know where?
No idea where the solar array is. Where's the solar array?
Right, apparently right near this. And I...
Well, then it can't be.
Well, I also, there's, I, I, well, because I asked that, especially when this was going on, not only did they talk about that, but also our lease says we can't shadow the solar array either.
I understand, I...
So that's another element.
But the town has not come to this board to talk about the solar array, so I don't even know where that is.
But that, it was my understanding they were communicating amongst themselves. Apparently not. So we need to evaluate this more.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's, there's a fall zone and, and if you've got a solar array out there, you don't want...
That's the other deal.
Well, we could just throw the ordinances out totally if you'd like.
No.
And then just move on. But I think that that's probably the wrong thing to do, a hundred percent. Okay, good. Um, so, do we wanna, what do we wanna do?
I have another question.
You have another question? Is it different than this, this setback?
Oh, you're sure you know that, okay.
Well, should we decide what we want? I mean, do we need to talk to legal about how they interpret that? I mean, I personally interpret that the lease should be at the hundred and twenty-five percent.
I think the lease is. I think, I'm pretty sure that...
No, the lease is fifty-five.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know the specs on the lease. I know, I don't even know if we established that.
Is the lease in here?
No, I don't think so.
No?
I don't think we act, we just said that we weren't gonna charge them for it. I don't know beyond, um, just to donate it back to the community, to the county. I don't know that we established the space in the lease at this point.
Okay.
But it's the first time hearing that they're coming off of the access of Route One. I thought they were coming up right now with the road. So there's already changes.
All right, so there's a bunch of different things and hurdles. Um, so coming off of State Route One is, is nothing that we have any oversight on. Ask the state whether they're gonna let you do that.
So...
Yeah, the lease...
Talking to legal again. Is it maybe a good idea for Saginaw County and you guys to get together to...
So we have a selectmen's meeting, select ward meeting. I forgot about that. Uh, a week from Thursday.
Okay.
Um, there, there's obviously things that we didn't touch on that we probably should have touched on. Uh, we don't wanna, because I know it was important for you to move forward. That was one of the things, really, you're trying to expedite this process. But it feels like we've left some of the discussion out.
It sounds like it, yes.
Um, and one of the things I brought up in our review was to make sure they didn't impede in the shadow of the solar array.
Okay.
Um, I don't, I, because I don't know where it's placed. I can't answer the questions.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know that either.
We need to dial one.
I, I, I don't think, I mean, I know, and I know this is just a formative meeting.
Well, no, but this is, this is good that it is because we shake out these sort of things and maybe the...
It's not that we can't do it. I mean, you make sure that our paid tenant is not in...
Absolutely. Now, what if where the solar company wants Saginaw County doesn't work for Saginaw County?
Yeah, and that's not up to me.
That's not up to us.
Okay. No, it's not.
So... Yeah. Yeah. Well, let's get a consensus from the board as far as the lease line should be a hundred and twenty-five percent.
Well, I'm not sure that the lease has to be on that, but the, but they have to have control over that area.
The only way they have control is if they have a lease, though, right?
No, they can do a easement or they can do a...
But how, how do you know?
There can be other things so that it's only a fall zone that they can't put other buildings and so forth in it. They can only have a fall, they get designed. But that's up to legal and so forth, figure that out. How they're gonna, how they're gonna have control of that fall zone? They don't have to, they don't have to have a lease where they have exclusive control for all things, like in that fifty by fifty area. They just have to have rights for fall zone.
Would control, uh, be use of a gate so nobody can get down in?
What do you mean?
Like, like if there's a gate here, nobody can get down there to do anything unless we open the gate or access control.
My worry is that we have select people that rotate in and out. And we have planning board people that rotate in and out. There needs to be some legal document somewhere on the property that says where the zone is. So that in five years or ten years, someone doesn't go out and put a big industrial or something on it.
When?
The tower and, you know, unless the town and the powers that be wanna just get rid of this whole thing in the ordinance. But I think it's a safety...
Well, as you say, the legal obligation, if a, a child walks in there in the fall zone and something happens, who's the legal responsibility at that point? For the fall zone?
Well, that's, that's, right, but that's above and beyond. I mean, I, I...
But that's, but that's the fall zone. If, if you have a fence or a boundary.
Right. Jim and I were on when this was created and the whole hundred and twenty-five percent was safety and security for everyone who's around it, whether it's your home or, you know. And that's the whole idea of it, so...
And the solar, right, which is a neighbor. I don't know how close it is. I honestly don't know where it is.
But I don't think we can, I, I mean, we don't have any mechanism to allow something less than that. I mean, the ordinance requires that.
Right.
We can't.
What does the fall zone say? Does it say it could be signage or does it have to be a fence?
It does not.
Near its property line or something like that.
It wasn't really written, thinking about a lease. It was written as it has to be within the property line.
But does it have to be fenced? Like, could it just be signage or... I'm just thinking we're gonna take out a timeline of the woods out there for... Yeah, I don't think any, it said anything about fencing. I think it just said the fall is twenty-five percent of the property is on the catch to the nearest property.
Communications tower and associated buildings and facilities shall be enclosed with an eight-foot-high fence, lock gates in order to discourage trespassing on the property and climbing on the tower. It does not say anything about the size of that. This property shall have signage warning of danger of the facility, including keep out when there are trespassing. Um, beyond that, it doesn't, it doesn't say that the fence has to be fifty by fifty or three hundred by three hundred. It doesn't, it doesn't say, so...
So, I mean, if they fence in the, the tower, I think that fifty by fifty area or whatever, that's fine. I, I, I think that's fine. The fall zone is in case of a huge storm, ice storm, presumably, you know, come down. You know, we don't think it's gonna do that. But once they get really loaded up, the maximum weight, you know, and, you know, we are having one more storm, so that's the idea. That it can't come down on, you know, create a hazard. And I don't think we have any mechanism to do it very much. Now, uh, you know, if that one would be included in, uh, you know, an ordinance change, then that's, that's, that's another...
Yeah, and it may not be, and maybe, you know, never mind where Saginaw County, you say, yeah, it's a huge lease. Can't do anything else.
It's just a bigger, it's just a bigger...
But you can have a lease for that fifty by fifty area and then have a lease for certain rights for fall zone.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
And it doesn't allow you to put other towers and so forth, or buildings or anything in that area. Just that it's your fall zone that, in the, you know, I mean, that in the event that it does come down and that you meet the rules.
Yeah, I don't think, there's nothing in here that provides a waiver.
Where's the power requirement for it? We were gonna come up Route, Route One right there. There's top-up underground power.
There's power at that old rest area, right?
Yeah, it used to be a little building and they had all kinds of...
So...
Yeah, so, let's see.
So where's your backup generator going?
Uh, right now, they don't have one.
They're not gonna have one?
Not right now, so...
Ooh, cool. Wow. Okay.
All right. Kind of looks through here. I don't see a whole lot more that would be an issue.
So you said the tower is not lighted?
No.
Heading us loud.
And the, the road going in is gonna be just far this tower?
Yes.
If the town wants to use the road at some later date, will they be able to?
Uh, draw land. I believe you guys can use that land however you want.
So that might be something to think about, Chad. Some verbiage in the lease, huh?
Yeah.
Could've broken.
So, um... So you show, um, on one of these plans, future tenant and through the other buildings?
Yeah, so we usually design the tower, so it's not just one person. Uh, like this one, I believe I've heard that maybe West Bath might put some services on this tower. So we wanna make it available for other towns or carriers or whoever else.
So little blocks. Sorry, John, go ahead.
I, could a cell tower rent space from the county?
If the county is up for that, absolutely. I'm not sure that the county does that too often, but...
Would we share the revenue? I'll be there with the chair, that's all. So rectangles on here are the small...
Yeah, so, yes, so this is just, uh, the whole surround space. Usually the, yeah, a little building or an upside cabinet or something. Just showing that three carriers can fit inside a fifty by fifty with the tower.
Well, the, the height, I think that we, and I'm not sure how we wanna go at it. We're, you know, there's a proposal that's gonna go before the town meeting.
Right.
For, uh, you know, for government agency to not be restricted to the hundred and fifty feet.
Correct.
If they are thinking about putting other non, you know, uh, government agencies on the tower, then maybe we should consider having that ordinance verbiage a little different.
Um, yes, the ordinance verbiage is different than what we proposed. Well, we didn't propose it in the first place, so...
No, but if there's gonna be commercial tenants in there, that could be a problem. Is now is the tower a commercial entity or not?
Yes.
And maybe that could be covered in the lease or something. It says there's no, no commercial...
Well, not quite. So the, the lease that we have, the language we have for the ordinance, which goes into effect in theory a week from today, presuming it passes, can be amended at a future ordinance date. We, we tried to rush through this to expedite what you're trying to do. And we're seeing some of the issues that we left out. And so we need to address it.
That's what...
So, it's not my question.
Do you guys have other, uh, questions?
What about emergency access? If they need it locked in close? Well, this is gonna be Saginaw. I gotta imagine John will have the key. I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to... Yeah, I gotta imagine.
Yeah.
West Bath or I'll talk to them. So if you don't get DOT control access permission, then you go the other way? Then we... Regroup? We regroup and see if they wanna spend money on a thousand, multi-thousand foot roads. So we'll see.
Right.
I think the DOT will do it. If they do it for Waszuluski, they'll do it for that side of town.
They've worked with us in the past. Good, and the reason being is they know there's very limited vehicle access. It's once a month.
Yeah.
Worst-case scenario, so they know that people aren't coming in and out all the time, so...
Yeah, because they use that for the DOT truck weigh station. So he's not gonna watch you.
No, don't.
When you know when I...
I think if the commissioners have a meeting or it has to go to the commission level, I think that's June eighth.
You're talking about DOT commissioner?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and maybe for the fall zone, maybe it can be written as, uh, no, uh, no habited areas or something like that. Just in case, just in case the solar fire is nearby. I don't want, I mean, if, if there's a panel there, it's not as big of a deal as...
Right.
Right, a person. A person, right, habited areas, so...
But then that negates the ordinance. So, so the town needs to work this out of where everything is and maybe communicate with planning board a little bit about what they're doing. And then we can help them figure that out. Um, and, you know, so I, I, I think those are really your own couple of obstacles.
Okay.
Um, you know, other than that, you know, towers are quiet and, and they're fine. But it's just trying to work that out. And again, I'm just really concerned about down the road, people not remembering and all of a sudden, people think that something's going on People think that something's going on and someone buys the property from the town and all of a sudden.
They can't.
It's just, just makes a mess and you don't want to have to figure it out.
So, yeah, so there's, I, I don't know, if we're headed down towards any fees or anything, I don't know if they told you, the select board voted to waive.
Oh, okay.
The forty-five hundred dollars, so, uh, no applica-, whatever the fees are for the planning board is, and I believe you sent a check into the town, we're giving that back.
Okay.
I wanna ensure that that line item is not on the bill to Sagalock, because you're getting.
Oh, yeah, no, no, it's, uh, no, it won't be.
So I'm confused about the fees.
The, the town is waiving the fees.
Why were they even charged a fee? It's a pre-application meeting, it's no fee.
No, no, for future fees, they said, it came out, 'cause they sent us money, they already sent us a check.
Right.
There was, uh, I think they might have.
They didn't request money, they sent.
A little confusion whether or not this was gonna be a pre-application or an application meeting.
Well, even an application meeting's four hundred dollars, not fourteen hundred dollars.
They need to build a permit or anything too.
And, and then, you know.
That's how we count.
And then, how many, you have less than an acre, so.
They sent it for the two meetings plus the additional acre. That was, that was written on the schedule, and they just sent one check, they wanted to just get it out of the way.
I, I just wanna make sure that if staff told them what that fee was, that it's.
No, we, we can.
Nobody from here told them what the fee was.
Yeah, okay.
They put it on themselves to send a check that wasn't correct.
And we, and we wanted to return it as gratis for our benefit back to, from the county to the community.
Appreciate it.
And I just wanna make sure that line item didn't show up as available back at the county.
No, we'll take care of that.
Yeah.
Um, did you have a question back?
Well, I just, I just wanted to say that I have several towers, one in Sabatas, which, one in Mariarad, one in Woolwich right there, next to Taster Main. And, uh, and a couple, two, three other, all of those are designed to, the fall zone is the, it's within itself. So I would, I would put myself at rest if I were you about the length of it, because it is like a tree. They're designed to come in, and Woolwich was a, was a big to-do about that.
Yeah, they just bend in half, kinda thing.
Big to-do, and it's, and they proved that it falls on its own footprint.
So we have to change, change the ordinance then, right?
What part of the office is the shadow to the solar array?
Oh, I don't know what the shadow, I'm just talking about falls on it if it was to collapse.
So I do have a question on one last, so when did you wanna start construction?
Tomorrow, yesterday.
Yeah, I think they, they, they wanna start, so they're doing the, uh, a four-tower network. Uh, West Cassett, West Bath, Georgetown, and Phippsburg to increase the service. So this is the, this is the number one of the four, four towers they're trying to do, so.
So, so they have, they started the other tower chain?
Nope, they're all in permanent, but this is, this is the most likely one they're gonna sell.
Right, so your next thing, so it's pre-application, then preliminary, then final?
And work with legal.
And town needs to.
Well, I, I would, are, are you local?
Yeah, pretty good.
I would encourage you to come to the select board meeting on the eighteenth.
Okay.
Um, just to, to work through what we have here, so that we know what we need to revise.
Absolutely, should.
We're not, we're not trying to be a hindrance, we're trying to build that properly.
Uh, should that be Sagalock that comes to that, or?
Uh, I think probably you, 'cause they're gonna need, they're not what they need.
We need, yeah, we need to know what, and, and, and I, and, well, we need to make sure that we have the solar array information at that meeting, so we can collectively determine.
Do you have the solar array information?
We have a lease in place, so we.
But do you have, like, where the panels are gonna go and all that?
But I, I, I know, I'm pretty sure we have a lease for the land, which should designate about where it's gonna go. I know they cut their lease in half, so I don't know if the original footprint was closer to you or not. I don't, I actually don't know where the footprint is, but I know that we, they reduced the size.
Okay.
When the solar company last came to the select board, they had an approximate site, but they hadn't finished all of the test stand.
So, thank you for coming in. Sorry for not, it's just.
So we'll be back in touch and.
Absolutely, and so when you're ready to come back, our preliminary, you have the Mel's office, and we'll set up a hearing, we have to do a hearing for the preliminary, so that.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
That's soundbait, it's an important thing to do.
All right.
When is it, next week?
The eighteenth.
Eighteenth of August.
Five, so we're here.
We'll move forward with the helping of the first.
Yep, keep early, we need to be here. And if you guys have any questions, feel free to, I, you know. Yep. The solar people send you anything, or.
Sorry, I thought earlier, but I just see it was. Right, right, right.
Absolutely, that'd be very helpful. I hate to, um, listen to you. Thank you, sir. Yes, I agree, yes, for everybody. Thank you.
All right.
Start with some of the other questions from HSE, or how many others to?
However you wanna do it, so this is for preliminary, you guys, for your last time for preliminary, there were a bunch of questions, so we ended up tabling it until today, um, you've written up answers to a lot of things, or everything that we asked about, right? Um, does everybody have this?
I don't have, you don't.
You don't have one of those? Carly, do you have an extra one from?
It might be a spare.
I could fall, I could fall, James.
I heard the first half was. I don't know, we definitely did the whole.
Well, Carly, please, um, do you have more of the, you know, the lease?
I just have the box, since there are.
Yes, it doesn't have any, any.
Can you grab, grab two? Yeah, we should have had some. I know there were, but.
Very valuable.
Did he go upstairs?
Huh, okay, all right. He's gonna grab a couple of extras, do you have one here? So you wanna just go through, what do you guys wanna do, you wanna ask questions, you wanna have them go through the document?
I think it'd be beneficial to help them go through the document and ask questions as they go.
Perfect.
Yes, we have.
Let's do that.
Yeah, three topics to talk about.
Yeah.
Here is sort of a figure we pulled together, we started drainage question, um, which we've done quite a bit of digging on. And so I think we need to go back a little bit more in time to figure out what was there and then what was there now. In two thousand sixteen, main DOT came in and put in the system that's in now, showing that.
Talking about this one here?
Prior to that, yes, prior to that, there was a fifteen-inch pipe, I think there was an eighteen-inch extension that came through the trench basin that drained under the landfill back in two thousand fifteen. That had all clogged multiple times to the point where.
Where was that, ready to type again?
Oh.
Under the landfill, you said.
Yeah, it came to the stage basin and it shot at a thousand feet or so over in this direction.
So they drained the water from that way?
No, I'm sorry, so, yeah, so here's our side, the landfill side.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, drained the water this way, there was intended for.
So you don't really know where that pipe was, it just seems different there, you know?
Yeah, it's been.
You can see the collapse of clog.
It's been, it was abandoned, that's part of the, the work in two thousand sixteen. So back in two thousand fifteen, before two thousand sixteen, this road was flooding quite frequently, and I think even the road to the west was flooding. And DOT at times was having to come out here in pump water to get it down to acceptable level away from the drainage system that existed then. So in two thousand sixteen, DOT put together this plan, this was their design for drainage in this area, which included a twenty-four inch pipe, and reached an agreement with Ted and his outfit to install drainage swale in town property. So that's the twenty-four inch pipe, this is the old drainage pipe that had been abandoned. That all drains down and it still flows around property where it was supposed to go and the landfill was built. This, the system back in two thousand fifteen was flooded because there was heavy sediment coming down.
And you got. And you got.
Um, as well as from various activity that, in the DOT drainage system. So as part of the work in two thousand sixteen, the project was still, the ditch was cut out and provided, and this ditching here was worth that to prevent future erosion.
And isn't there another swale, so when it comes down the hill, it cuts across that way?
Yeah, for, that's all.
Yep.
This line here depicts the, the agreement between DOT and Ted and his outfit, showing the maintenance easement that DOT now has to access and maintain this drainage swale to make sure people can flow. So, but back in two thousand, before this work was done, this area flooded frequently and pretty severely.
When you say this area, you mean this side or this side?
This side, yeah, and it was in the road, especially in the road, I mean, when the water got so high there, top the road, that, that meant it was flooding that. It wasn't so severe over here, because we climb up pretty.
Right, it's higher.
Right. So what we've observed in, in last week's training, so it was sort of a good example to go out there and see what happens in pretty large storming, if it was between four and five inches in this area, is that this pipe, during that storm, would not even flow full, it flowed maybe half or two-thirds full.
Half, half full.
Half full.
They have pictures of it.
I get pictures and videos from Ted, who was out there chasing the rain, so I happen to share those as part of the final, final approval. Um, so this system operated the way it should've, um, for a rainfall event that large, as it was designed in two thousand sixteen. After the rainfall, there was maybe three, four inches of ponded water at the outlet of this pipe that is a result of a little bit of sediment that's kind of gathered in here over time, and there's still erosion happening, and that's the reason for this high point here, because we have some sediment deposit from the DOT drainage infrastructure. So the, the flooding, oh, I should actually talk about this instance too. This pipe that we talked about last time, where we talked about maybe this new fifteen-inch culvert introducing water that did not flow there, there was, there was an existing eighteen-inch pipe in here, showing the DOT plans for two thousand sixteen work. It is buried and we dug around and couldn't find it, but historically, there was a cross culvert here that drained this area into this. Now, we're trying to reinstate that, we do only have a fifteen-inch pipe, just so that we can get water from one side to the other, can't go much smaller, it will clog. But we don't think that that water here is any different than what was there historically, and we think that this drainage swale was designed to accommodate that for the DOT design plans.
Was it really a design plan or was just something that came in through color? There's a whole plan?
Yep, yep, and we, we had a very, it's part of the evening agreement in the back of the letter, you'll see a kind of scanned copy of that design plan.
Well, let me just talk to you for one second, Carly, the stuff that Mr. Paquette brought in, there was one, one copy, where is that?
Um, it's upstairs.
Can you get that, please? So we have that, or someone, so we have that? Um, you, so Mr. Paquette is the guy who owns the land on the other side, and he, I should ask John, 'cause John talked to him. He brought in a letter and a bunch of, it's like sixty-two pages of DEP documentation, um, which was tough to sort through, 'cause there's only one copy, so we got scans, and, and he's out of town, so he couldn't come here this evening either. Um, but I think it's historic stuff for, from the DEP and the distance, the heights and all that, so.
For the landfill closure, or for some?
So I think, well, he was.
The wetland is small on the inside, which he owns the land, you know, the business is up and on here, he owns that, so, thank you so much.
So is his, his permit for?
Yeah. So, but I was trying to, I, I asked John to contact him and try to get some contacts, 'cause this was all we had, and we're not allowed to speak to people outside the meeting, so, um, couldn't get a hold of him, he's now out of town. And this is just really hard to. But it looks like, um, permitting from, like, your ordinance is, are all right, because of its DEP stuff. Um, all right, I just wanna make sure we had it while we were.
So just so everyone knows too, uh, so like, there used to be a fish market over here at one time.
Okay.
And the woman actually came to, to the, to the codes officer, and she wanted to sell hot dogs out of this location before. You know, what, what I think has probably happened over the years is the pipe that ran through the landfill has dissolved, it's closed, right? So that kept this pole side at a normal level, and now that pipe is no longer maintained or used or crushed. The water on this side has raised quite a bit. You can go to a rainstorm and see it flood FW webs up to their heart mark. And, and so like, nobody can tell me that, like, this isn't new, like, Paquette's lost a ton of land, the, what's, Carly, what's the woman's name? Um, that owns the small lot by FW web, like, her law is under water now, and there's no doubt in my mind, it's.
Louder.
Louder is because of the landfill.
So can you, can I ask when she came into the town, do you remember, what, around?
It was probably twenty years ago, she was gonna try to sell hot dogs out of that. And so what I summarize is, over the years, this pipe that goes, is probably, it probably still drained for quite some time, right? Until it just became non-functional, and now it's clogged, and now these poor people on this side have lost a ton of land, there are a whole lot on this side, and FW web's part of it, and, and that, and for all we know, that pipe's still working today at a diminished capacity, and when it finally stops, where, where is the flooding gonna stop for these people?
All right, that's a, that's a great question, so, so I can't speak to DOT's sort of design parameters that they use to size this new culvert. That was DOT's design, it had nothing to do with Ted.
I get it, if you'd like.
No, it had nothing to do with Ted or the landfill property, right, so DOT, DOT designed this infrastructure.
Right.
So it wasn't.
So.
But they, but they also show up, and if, if the fill's too high on this side, they're not gonna put, they can't put a culvert, right? Any lower than what's on this side.
They did put a new culvert here, it drains from here.
Yeah, it's just not as low as the one that used to be had that works, and that's why the water's just higher. That's just a simple fact of it, that you can't understand.
It happens, right, we can't, we can't argue that point.
Well, but, but it also happened because you guys came into town, dumped a lot, a bunch of waste in here, right? That you probably shouldn't have, and you got in trouble from DEP, and then you had to cap it all over, and, and in the meantime, these people are the ones paying for it. And the other thing is, like you said, there's no hazardous waste where out there, you can drive by at thirty miles an hour and see telephone poles stacked up there right now. So like, you guys are still continuing to bring waste into the town, hazardous waste and stockpile it somewhere where you're not supposed to. And, and like, and like you're saying, that the, the clean harvest containers are stored on-site, like, they're rolled up, I don't, I don't blight out one for a minute, you know? There's guys in the back room, we can call them up right now on the back room, the back stuff out of there, and they tell me it's all heavy metals and all kinds of other stuff, and they get to put it into clean harvest cans and ship that. So I honestly think you guys are lying to us when you tell us that.
Well, we're not trying to lie to anybody, uh, not at all. Um, I spoke to the environmental representative at the BIW about what we store out there, so I can't speak to people in the back rooms, but they, they do not store hazardous materials at the site.
You can go there right now and look at it, like, let's go on a, a, a planning board field trip, it's there right now.
I can always speak to their policy there.
But so what we're trying to do is we're trying to move forward with what's gonna happen, which, from what you're saying, is gonna be better, there's gonna be any storage there.
No, they didn't say that, you're saying that, they didn't say there's not gonna be storage there, they said, once it gets built, in like a twenty-year plan, it gets built out, they won't store anything there.
Can I say something?
Uh.
That has something to do with the tenant, the tenant BIW and the codes enforcement officer, if they're breaking the code, then the town can go talk to them.
Well, you're, you're the owner, you, I think you'd be the one that gets cited, not, not the tenant. John, who, who would get cited?
Okay, okay, so.
Can I address them?
So, let's just take a second.
I, I disagree.
About taking a second?
Well, John, John, who would get cited?
Whoever, whoever's, whoever's doing it.
So not the landlord, the landlord doesn't get, the landlord doesn't get cited?
Um, I think that they would be, they would involve them as well.
I think it's fully with the town's purview to ask the question of the landlord, who can talk to BIW and get you the answers you need. But as part of this application, we are proposing to get rid of material storage on-site.
Right, and you're looking at developing this and building it this fall?
Uh, this fall, spring, whenever we're able to get all of our approvals in line and move forward.
So sooner than later.
Is that a full blow though, of the entire parking lot?
Yeah.
And you're doing it all at once, not phased at all?
That's the intent.
And estimate, estimate duration of construction?
Uh, I, I think that all the gens, I can't really answer all those questions right now, but we get approval first and then we can probably plan. I mean, I thought we'd be, I thought it'd be built by now, but it's not, so.
You know somebody with a asphalt plant, right?
But I, I would like to say the culvert's going across, I think the inver grades are not that much difference of what you're talking about. I, I, because they were two fifteen-inch corrugated pipes, and a corrugated pipe will not carry as much as a smooth bore. This is a classic smooth bore, two-foot diameter, and the inver, I believe, is similar to the same than that one, I can't fathom it. But I'm seventy-three years old and I've gone down there many, many years, and I've seen it flood many years before that was even filled, when I was a kid.
Right.
And I do know the hot dog stand, where she was talking about doing that, I know the language very well, I know what she was thinking about. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't.
But at one point, there was a fish, a fish market in that, in that location, right? So at one point, people operated on it, and now it's, now it's a waterway.
I'm just, I can't say that, but the, the state is the one that justifies the, the inlet, so that was across that road, not me.
Right, and, and so.
So you're pointing the finger at me, and I think it's a state issue you're talking about. Because.
The state, the state.
Let me just say one thing, the gravel coming down would spring help that trench. Where, where, and, and it, one did plug up, so we had a fifteen-inch culvert over here, the one that they dug the ditch over, but the gravel down there came and built up and it plugged it, so it was backing up that way, that's when it flooded, from their gravel. So that's why they agreed, the state agreed, to pay us, to take my land out and open trench it, 'cause that's better than any smooth bore, have a thought of being. And then put a two, two-foot smooth bore in there at the grade that they, they set, I didn't set that grade. To, to, for the other side of the road, it's really, if you're gonna, if you think about it, it's their road and their pipes that are coming across, not Ted Crook's. And, and so they, they're responsible really for whatever taken place there, for the water backup, not me. And so, I don't know why, I don't, but I will say, the reason that they are gonna maintain that, all, because we complained to them about their gravel coming down and plugging up a little pit one across there, and it was a hundred cent, rather than put a smooth bore all the way over there, they ought, we ought, thought it was better to open trench it, put a twelve, two, two, two-foot smooth bore piping, which would carry a lot more water than the corrugated pipe, that's just a fifteen inch, or two fifteen inches.
So Ted, you're saying, you're saying if your.
I'm looking at you as civil engineers, I understand that, I mean, I'm sure some of you are engineers up there, I know it.
So Ted, you're saying if your landfill was never there, the water on the side of the swamp would be the same?
That pipe and that ingrate are all ran by the state.
So you're saying, so just to clarify, you're saying if your landfill wasn't on that side, this water would be the same elevation it is today?
I guess I would say that. I guess I would, because I won't control the pipes going across onto my property.
So you're proposing to actually clean the ditch out, which is filled in?
We're gonna work with DOT, there is some sediment that's eight to twelve inches or so in different areas. They own the maintenance agreements, but if we have to go in there, Ted has to go in there and clean out that sediment to make sure that that ditch is free draining. to make sure that that ditch is free draining, we'll do that.
Yeah, I mean, you have to understand our concern.
If that, if that ditch was two feet lower right now, the water wouldn't do any difference. The pipe is the thing determining the fact that they can't...
Right, but DOT came along and they're not gonna, they can't, they can't put a piping lower than your land. I know you gave them an easement and did a bunch of work. If they can't come in and put a, drop a pipe down four feet deeper, like you know that that pipe went right through your landfill and that, and for years, that's what drained it. And now it's clogged up and it's no longer working.
I think maybe when, I think maybe when the pipe was put in by the DOT, they should have designed it better to go a little bit deeper to get help back to that swamp a little bit better than what it does now. That's my view of it.
Well, I'll tell you, I think you could probably drop that a foot and a half right now.
Three.
Or maybe do it pretty easily if you wanna go ahead and dig that up and drop, have them drop that down two more feet. But that's the state you gotta talk to, not me.
Is it possible, when you're discussing this with the state, to talk to them about lowering that? Because I mean, your cap...
I, I wanna say, look, the town was very much involved. Steve Reno was there with us when we put all of it in. It was all, everybody was hunky-dory.
I'm not saying we're not hunky-dory now, I'm just asking moving forward to try to make this work.
We were very much involved.
That... When you're talking to the DEP...
DOT.
A DOT, sorry. That they're gonna lower this to clean that high spot out. That the cap is over here, why not go this way a little bit more, make it a little bit deeper?
We can absolutely ask the question. We can pose the town's concerns.
Kinda understand, the pipe is where it is.
We can't force them to, to do anything.
No, you can't force them to do anything. We have a huge hole out here, it's a spring hill that they want to fix, so we can't force them to do anything. We can ask them.
You could, DOT certainly could have put a pipe all the way to the back of the property, to your point, to drain the water. But...
Above ground is better though.
It is, it is, it's better to be above ground than open, because it's easier to maintain. So we'll, we'll ask that question when we talk to DOT about who's gonna be the maintenance out there. But as it relates to our project, we can say that this sediment will be removed from the ditch to reestablish the original ditch line.
Does the DOT have to do that? Or are you getting a...
We would need permission from them since it's their drainage system. But we can, we can work through that as part of our construction project.
Will that change the level of the water on the south side of the road?
It's really controlled by the code.
Not, not really.
No, but if...
So the answer to that question is no, well. You mean to clean the ditch out?
It would.
I mean, it may, it may temporarily, um, but there is not water ponded in this ditch at all times because of the water loss. But we went out right after the last planing where we, and this side of the road was completely dry, so... Yeah, right after the storm, it might lower that down a couple of inches, maybe five or even twelve if the sediment is as high as we, you serve it.
Well, something's causing them, well, have this day over there somewhere.
Well, like Garley said.
Because it's a lot...
And it may not be, it's, it's not something that we can solve tonight. We can just do our due diligence to try to make sure that it doesn't get worse based on the application, right? I mean, that's really what we're hearing.
If it's created by man, it should be solved by mankind, so. It should be able to be solved.
And it can be solved.
Maybe not by us at this table or by...
Right, it can be solved.
And it's still a problem for those people over there.
But it's going to have to be solved by the DOT.
And we can, we can provide contacts for those people to reach out, because I think they need to start asking the DOT about that pipe.
Yeah, it's just a tough thing because...
The, DOT is a powerful entity.
We had a foot of water over our driveway because the culvert down on the corner over here crushed and totally filled. We drove through a foot of water for three weeks until they fixed it, yeah? And they had two months notice before that because the water kept going out because it was clogged. So yeah, the thing. Alright, so... Moving forward with this.
Okay, so the other item we talked about over the last time was lighting, the generator needs steps. Though, uh, we can reach out to BIW as well, they do for lights out there. And they do not have generators out there all year operating lights. And we need this responsibility out there. There are times where they need generators, um, as they wish. So what we're working on with them now is a lighting plan to provide a conduit through the proposed parking area. So they have access to power for their lights, whatever they choose to install, security cameras, anything like that. And we can add that to our final plan to make sure that they have a road if possible, so they don't have any generators in the future.
Nice, you're going above the cap and below the pavement?
We're gonna put belly steel conduit right on top of the cap because we had about eighteen inches of gravel under the road, the parking, which gives us some space to play there. So we'll have to put that right on top of the cap.
Okay.
So it'll be part of the final plans initially when we have a chance to pull that through.
Yeah, because they'll, they'll want to show you on the back corner. So you didn't look at going like down the side?
No.
No?
Well, we're moving in there.
Yeah.
We might, we might have some gravel short, but we don't have a plan since it's, also the conduit.
Alright, so that's site management.
The other topic we covered a little bit earlier was the material that's stored on the site. So for the mention, I spoke to the environmental group and got the answer I shared. And we did talk about, you know, I asked them what happens if we turn this in the parking lot in six months? And they said, well, I'll have to figure out what to do with that construction weight on the area and storage materials somewhere else. So they're, they're prepared for this project and move forward.
So John is at something, you can do maybe a periodic check out there to see if they really do have things that shouldn't be?
Yeah, I could do that.
I mean, would you be alright for that?
Oh, uh, no, not at the time, he goes down, blows some of them, does all kinds of stuff, yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
Sure, he can go down and play all he wants.
Okay. Just to try to get an handle on whether we've got stuff out there or not, um...
I think they should work here, though.
There you go. So, any questions on maybe the traffic from before? On this more video? Um, I don't have...
I do have a question. How, how long is it gonna be the left turn, turn lane on the west side of the parking lot?
Two hundred feet.
Two hundred feet, okay. So they anticipated, so how many carts queue in there?
Um, the analysis results, so it's sort of a fee based upon the projected volume, but because their peak hour, like morning peak hour is so early, um, I think we're only showing a fifty-foot queue, but that's good because it gives added deceleration length. So people can slow down before they hit the back of the queue.
Gotcha.
I'm pretty sure it was fifty feet. I know it was fifty feet. So it's only, the queue is only fifty feet, but the lane's gonna be two or three feet long to fifty, so...
Gotcha.
Fifty-one feet.
Thank you.
Alright, so do you have an actual outpatient?
Yeah.
For this last time?
We submitted it in for the...
Okay, and I think I handed mine off at the end of the meeting. But that's okay.
I don't have a copy.
We do? I think we gave them all back.
I think they're already here.
Maybe?
There's extra copies.
You have a box here? How nice.
Two different plants.
And, um, so I think what happened at the last meeting, these big ones didn't get out really on. So your permit has gone into the DEP. Had, what's the status of that?
We've passed the regulatory threshold for the PBR, so we have that now approved. We are, we got our fourth round of comments from the San Luis Bureau around finalizing some transfer of applications to the right entity or the property. So we're just waiting to get that resolved at this point.
So as far as the design?
I think we'll resolve, okay.
Define? So you don't have an actual approval yet? Because we're working on, okay.
And this doesn't meet sidewall?
Um, anything on top of the landfill is...
Doesn't, because they consider it impervious.
They consider it impervious and the site, if it's on top of the landfill, it doesn't fall under the periphery of the landfill. It falls under chapter four hundred.
I think you said that last time.
Yeah.
So you can keep a thirty-acre landfill?
As long as you have landfill, you just pave it, yeah.
So you're really a good piece of property to use for parking? When you think about the amount of trees you have to cut down, put somewhere else.
So the storm, the stormwater during a rain event, right, a three-inch rain event, then there's no stormwater plan, right? It just goes...
That is been reviewed by the DEP, it's part of the approval process.
So, but it's not like it just impacts the person down slow, right? There's no...
There'll be no, no measurable impact to people down slow, which is, I think we provided a copy of our stormwater plan.
This is erosion control.
You have the hydrograph from the last, the last, you know?
It's so much more, isn't it?
Yeah, stormwater, you know, bro.
Stormwater right here. Did you want that?
Uh, no, I just don't, I just don't understand how that's possible. You know, how can you have eight hundred and thirty spot parking lot and they have a three-inch rain event and it doesn't affect the person's action? How is that possible?
Yeah, and, and we, we worked through that calculation and we proved that our post-development flows were controlled to our pre-development flows.
So the travel's slowly all the way across here. And makes it to...
It's a...
Do you guys just table and just show us your freaking post-development?
It should be in the stormwater, in the text of the stormwater.
Jamie's our engineer.
Yeah, right, yes. Flip your head.
I just pretend.
So, this is, Jerry, this is the area, right, right here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That you're talking about?
Yeah.
It can't flow this way, right?
Correct.
It all has to go this way, correct? And it's, how many feet higher than it was, we'll say, twenty-five or thirty years ago?
I would say, I would estimate like six or seven feet. Pocat's got it on his thing, but I think it's probably like at least six feet higher.
I mean, if it can't go this way?
Right.
It's gotta go down.
Right. So like if there was a building at one point right here, and people operated a fish market out of it, and now you need a boat to get to that building?
Yeah, for sure.
The, yeah, it used to be a fish market right there. And so, and like the fact that that's an open water, you, I could drive an older boat in here.
Yeah.
And like the fact that that has no impact. And then like I just can't blame that on DOT, sorry, I just don't buy the whole DOT culvert thing.
And how much, and, and impervious surface will be adding here?
We're getting about four point five acres that are all going to flow in this direction away from that pond.
So how much do you have now?
Three point seven.
And then plus another four and a half.
Four point, I think it would be four point eight, I think we get to beat that.
A total of four point eight?
Total of eight point five counting existing...
Okay, so you're gonna have eight acres of impervious surface.
What y'all do is down, out and away from the, from the pond area, yeah?
So Jimmy, see how the, the lines kinda do this? This is the high point along the back of the pavement. So the pavement right now is flowing this way and the same pavement's gonna flow that way. The new pavement's gonna flow backwards. And then this is going this way to that low spot and going around the back.
I'll draw contour lines for anybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, no, that's alright, I understand.
No, so...
Well, we had computers. So, I don't know, I mean, that's...
This, this, this guy's lost a ton of land, you know? And like I, I truly believe it's been blown off.
Either, you know, either that, that landfill, I mean, it's got, that's the only change in the only area, that's the only thing that's changed. To, to flood this area here.
But I...
And whether or not there was aquifers underneath or whatever that were destroyed or whatever's happened, there's no other explanation why this water is as high as it is.
It's the DOT culvert that's not...
I can't, I can't say it's six or seven feet because the inver of that pipe is very similar to the other one that was there, telling you right now.
Dr. Lee, you said last time, mid-last meeting, you said that Perry, when he worked in the foundation, he, he found that original pipe?
Yeah.
Okay, when, when you stacked all forty thousand yards of rock, right, in the parking lot, probably ten, fifteen years ago?
It was on the other side.
What's that?
They did.
You stacked a bunch of rock right in that general area, right? That's what DOT's doing right now over in Woolwich to compact the soil. They've compacted it four feet with half of them on the dirt that you had there. So whatever pipe was in there at one point is destroyed. There was a pipe in there, like you've, you've said it, it's in, it's in the pocket in the void, I read, that there was a pipe and you said that it was mismatched pipe and everything else, but it worked for years. And now I think what's happened is that pipe has collapsed. It's no longer used and now we're relying completely on the thing.
So we have to have that water go through to another owner's pipe instead of going into a common area pipe? Like the public's pipe, the town pipe? Like shouldn't that gentleman do someone's stormwater? It's, you, why would you dump someone's water back into another person's water? Where's the fairness in that?
I guess I don't follow you there.
I don't know.
So whatever, whatever happened, that pipe doesn't work anymore and the DOT went to fix it.
And when they did it, it's too high for the existing conditions. And I don't know...
That's a state issue, huh?
Who made that decision back then? Was the state? And we can't touch the road and you can't touch the road and there's nobody that you can fix that?
Yeah, but at the time we put it in, two thousand and sixteen, West Bath was there with your engineers, Steve Reno, whoever, you know, you...
Steve Reno is not in there.
No, no, you're, you're, you're represented there and, and they all said, this is a great book, put in, we're doing a smoothbore, two foot. I don't know, so it's really a state issue.
I think, I think, I'll have to tell you, like you came into our town, you dumped a bunch of hazardous materials, you did a lot of... You capped it over and now this landlord's on this side paying the price for that. And I don't think it's fair to them for us to just say, yep, keep going, keep marching straight ahead. I don't think that's fair. We're not doing any due diligence for this general public on this side. When this pipe completely fails, how much is it gonna flood out up to the road?
So what's your solution then?
I, I can't, I could, I can't in good faith say, yes, let's move forward with helping any more stormwater issues, any more water introduced into any system on this side. I know all the water flows this way, but I don't wanna reward somebody for causing a bunch of damage to a bunch of people's land in this side.
I don't think we're rewarding anyone about anything. I don't know what the solution to this would be besides the DOT looking into it and lowering that culvert and making that ditch work better.
Sure, when somebody comes, yeah, when somebody comes back and says that we're gonna go back to our previous level for this, these four landlords here, then I think the, the planning board should, would be interested and willing to hear any development for this piece. This whole landfill has caused a ton of issues for these four people over here.
We've, uh, we've, we've built this facility after it's all filled.
I, I, I will, I do wanna point out that landfill, while it was added, um, it was, it did go through the approval process through the DEP at the time it was closed. And I understand it went through the town process when it was closed. So the landfill is a permitted piece of property in the town.
And Ted, Ted was fined for doing it, correct? Is that correct?
I don't know the answer to that.
Is that correct, Ted? Yes or no?
Yes, yes, it was very legal, it was very legal to do it.
Jerry, dial it down just a little bit.
Well, like Jerry, it was legal, Jerry. It's what?
It was legal then.
It was legal then?
It was.
Then why would you have to pay a fine?
We, I, can I ask just a few questions?
Okay, alright, we're way off topic.
Why would you have to pay a fine for something that's illegal?
Jerry, for this point, it's a trend. Jerry, please, we're way off topic. Jerry, please, we're way off topic, and back and forth is not working, okay? All due respect. So, I don't think that we can do anything about.
You pay the fine.
The high water at this point. It's, the D O T has to look at it, Paquette has to talk to them, the town maybe talk to them about trying to do something, but I don't think we can penalize these guys because of something that happened that the D O T just, in my opinion, didn't put that culvert in long enough. But that's my personal opinion, and I just think that we shouldn't be badgering back and forth, either you or Ted.
I apologize, I did, I really did change it, but I did.
This is not how we wanna be in here, so.
Good, what happened?
Well, it shows to me, I mean, it's pretty obvious on that plan, you can see where the wetland is. You know, you can see the problem, it's, uh, and, uh, you know, I don't see any solution tonight. I don't, I haven't seen any solution often, and, um, I think that we need to just take a break and let them come up with a solution. If they, if they wanna do this, my opinion, if they wanna do this project, they've gotta find a solution for that high water up there.
I don't know how to do that, it's over a state road.
Yeah, and, and we, we are doing what we can on our property to clean that ditch out to make sure the flow is sustained. And we are reaching out to D O T.
I heard, I've heard all your arguments, I've heard Mr. Crocker's, I've listened to Jerry, I've read Tuesday's Paquette's information. I'd like to hear from him personally.
Yeah, I offered that he could have met with us last Tuesday, um, but I don't know.
Right now, right now, that's what I feel, so.
Okay, alright, well, this is for preliminary approval. And we tabled it last time to get more information, because we had a lot of concerns. And they have, I think, answered all our questions, whether you like the answers or not. So, I think to try to move forward with this, that we should finish asking our questions and make a motion and vote one way or the other on preliminary approval. Does anyone have any other points, questions? Or is there?
I, I guess I'm just wondering, and not to prolong this discussion any further, but. I guess I'm just wondering what we can do on our end if there's been something that has been in place for X amount of years, it's been, it's gone through the D E P process, whether it was the right way or not. And D O T has gone in and put this culvert in, so I think maybe the discussion is not necessarily what happened prior, but it's what can we do to look forward here? And I think the answer is, is, and we've asked it already, which is, can we reach out to the D O T and at least see if they can lower the culvert? I don't know, but I'm assuming the answer's probably gonna be no, because they're not gonna wanna do it, but we're gonna be doing work in this area anyways. And if the answer is yes, then potentially I'm in faith, something can happen, maybe there's more ditching along that, you know, southern portion of the parking lot, or whatever. But I don't think that something that has been historically there is something that we can change here at the town level. Especially if it's gone through the state level and it's been approved at this point, so.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, the culvert goes down two or three feet, and the ditch from.
Right.
The culvert out and around the edge, which is there now, is lowered, so they will drain out to the back.
And I'm in agreement with you that the culvert is, is a limiting factor at this point. I mean, it's not, it, it, everything else aside, it's the culvert that's. Well, I think last night we heard that you couldn't, you couldn't mess with this ditch, is that true, Dan, you said that?
We, we did, I, I did say that, because we were talking specifically about the buttons in that area, but now that we've got the information from D O T that shows that being constructed in two thousand and sixteen, we have the ability to go in there and maintain that. For one of the bigger ditch, we'd have to go after an individual permit and deal with D E P as well. But that would be, again, that'd be D O T's responsibility, because it's fair drainage that they do.
Right.
Right, so it's really D O T is the person.
I'm trying to throw, we wanna move the bus, but.
No, 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 but I mean, it's.
The only thing that's gonna change out there is that D O T goal.
Right, it's, it's.
There's not that you can involve their infrastructure for your project.
Not, not as part of our proposal, other than to reach out.
And reach out, exactly, yeah.
Right, so you can't even physically dig that ditch out if you wanted to.
Right.
I mean, you could.
Probably not, it's supposed to.
Doing it bad for forgiveness after.
And maybe, John, do you have a relationship with D O T guys?
Do I?
Yeah.
They don't.
Do you encourage enforcement much? No?
No.
I wonder if that's something that internally, townwide, town-wise, we could reach out to them. And.
You can see.
Explain the problem and see if there's.
You can see that Paquette fought that for years, and it did no good. He knows D E P real well. At D O T.
Well, so we can try, or we can not try.
Right, but could, could Ted and everybody offer a solution, like, would you be willing to fix what is wrong?
Because, because if we can.
We don't have, we don't.
You can ask them, you can, you can't, you can't tell me that you, you can call up D O T tomorrow and say, I wanna drop the culvert back to the historical level where it was, that they would probably give you permission.
We, we've already, we're gonna do that, we're gonna call D O T to see if there's any wiggle room for them to adjust that. We've pledged to, to reach out to them and ask them, and let, make sure that they know about the town's concerns. It would mean a lot in that request if the select board or representatives of the town would also reach out on behalf of.
That's you, Suzanne.
The property owner.
I, I would be shocked if that inverts the other type of, a foot difference.
But, but again, that's, that's.
And the one that's there right now.
I'd be shocked, please, uh, one person at a time.
Yeah, so regardless, three feet would be perfect, two feet would be okay.
You might have water running back the other way, because we, we got water over here, I don't know what the rate is over there, I don't know how you're gonna do it.
It'll work all the way up to the back, three feet, it's alright.
I'm sure the D E P can use a lot of creative time.
So, so are you looking to have the select board submit a request?
Yes.
In addition to what this request is?
Yes, please.
Would you mind coming to me maybe on the eighteenth and help us write that language? Um, because we are somewhat illiterate in this process.
Sure.
Thank you.
Eighteenth?
The eighteenth. So that we, if we're gonna try and address it, um, or if you got it a couple of days before, so we could look at it and discuss it. I'm happy to put that on the agenda.
Okay. Other questions for, sorry, I'm just trying to put this in here so I don't forget it. For the applicant, eighteen, five thirty. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we give this preliminary approval as presented with the caveat that.